Thank you all for zooming in with us. Happy to see your faces and talk to somebody other than my family. We are, I think we want, I'm going to just give it right over to Matt and then we'll run through our regular agenda.
Great, thanks Susan. Just wanted to say, Susan, that it's great to see everybody. I've been seeing my central office team, we've been doing these Zoom meetings every morning, so we've gotten pretty familiar with them. But I hope you're well, I hope you're healthy, and you're taking care of yourselves. And just wanted to start the meeting tonight with some simple thanks to our staff, to our parents, and to our kids, who are working so hard collectively in this new model. It's really hard to even imagine where we've gone in just a month, right? It's been a month since we've been out of school. Excuse me, and as you know, the governor extended that till the 20th, so we're really planning for the long haul here. We're going to have an opportunity tonight. Aaron's going to work us through a presentation about where we are with our distance learning, and it's a work in progress, and it's going to continue to evolve. And I did want to say, we're going to create a survey, I know Aaron will probably touch on it later, once we get this Phase 2 going for another week or so, get parents, students, and staff used to it a little bit, put a survey out so we can get really valuable input to move forward for the long term here. So I just wanted to thank everybody. It truly is a partnership, we are going to get through this together, but it is really amazing and interesting times that we're in. So with that, Susan, I'll give it back to you, and we can go through and do, I know my folks have some communication updates.
Yep, alright, and just know that we all appreciate everything y'all are doing at Central Office, we know how hard you're all working, and what you've done in such a short timeframe has been impressive. With that said, I'm going to run through communications, and I'm just going to go in the order in which I see you on my screen, so Lydia, do you want to?
Sure, just real briefly, and like everyone else, we've had Zoom meetings with NSBA, and they're providing updates, guides, and webinars, and calls to actions regarding the COVID-19 impact nationally. In K, of course, we've had Zoom meetings and webinars, recently had Dr. Mark Brackett and the Commissioner, and we're still continuing with the advocacy and the policy, and I would encourage everyone to visit the COVID-19 resource page for the up-to-date info that they have been gathering every day. So that is my communication news.
Great, thanks Lyd. Tara? You're muted Tara.
The host, there we go.
There we go.
Nothing from me.
Okay, Sharon?
Nothing from me.
Alright, Todd?
Nothing other than thanks for everybody doing the work that they're doing, and putting in the time, and in the basements, and in the bedrooms, and everywhere else.
Alright, Jeff?
Just echo that, you know, just thanks to everybody, just think about where we have been in just a month, it's truly incredible, so thanks to Matt, you, and the administration. But just also want to point out, this is actually our first meeting since the public hearing we had for facilities and enrollment, so talking about how the world has changed in about 30 days, right? So I just want to make sure we understand that that's still out there, we are really close to finishing, so I'd encourage everybody, including this board, to, you know, let's not lose sight of that, and just, the passion and the energy from the community has just been remarkable in that, and I just encourage them to keep that going. The next step obviously will be the Board of Finance, and I hope they find the vehicle that they can express that, that energy and passion to the Board of Finance and our friends over there. But again, just didn't want to lose sight of that in the midst of how the world has changed in the last 30 days with COVID.
Thanks Jeff. Hi, and do you have anything you want to share?
Nothing to share, just want to echo obviously what Jeff and what Todd said, just to see kind of where we've come over the last four weeks, you know, with my kids in particular, at all levels of schools, is pretty amazing, so just want to thank everyone for all their efforts.
Great, thank you. Jen?
Same thing, except I also have to add that I noticed Matt must still be shaving.
Sullivan there, looks like he got two shavers. Neil, do you have anything? Neil, you need to unmute your...
There I am.
Okay.
I shave a couple of times a week, so I prepared for the meeting. So just, you're going to hear a great report from Aaron later on about our distance learning efforts and everything that our certified staff has done to get that operation up and running, but I do want to point out that Human Resources has been involved really heavily in the last month, working with our leadership and all sorts of other conversations to keep literally every employee group in the Simsbury Public Schools moving forward to the extent that they can, and we have everything, everything from tutors and paraprofessionals, and our technicians, and work from home secretaries, and so it's been a myriad of conversations and agreements about what people could do, but I am excited to report that everybody was kind of waiting for the call of how they could pitch in, and I think it's important to note that while we're in this new environment, that sort of, everybody's rowing the boat.
Nice.
And contributing in the ways that they can, and my office has spent a whole lot of time and conversations to make that happen beyond all the work that Aaron and her team have done with just the distance learning operation. There's a whole business side, nutrition services side of our group that is continuing to work, and it's all very impressive. Number two, I wanted to note that even though we're in this environment, from a Human Resources perspective, it is hiring season, and we have in fact posted positions and are receiving applications as we typically do. Interviewing is likely to be in this format for the foreseeable future, and in addition to our leadership positions with Mr. Patrino's appointment to the principalship at Simsbury High, we have posted his principal's role, as well as the capstone coordinator position we talked about during the budget process. So those two processes have already started, and we are accepting applications on our other teaching positions resulting from retirements, and we'll be starting interview processes as soon as this week. And I've talked to my colleagues in Human Resources and other places, and nobody wants to miss the recruiting season, and people are out in a virtual environment and trying to find the best and brightest out there. To build Jeff's comments, we have not forgotten about facilities and enrollment, and in fact, I've had one conversation with Jeff Wozinski from Tecton, and Matt and I have a conversation tomorrow about how we can continue to inch that work forward even in an environment, so I wanted to report on that. And then lastly, I wanted to let the board know that I participate every Thursday morning at 8:00 in a public safety committee meeting for the town of Simsbury. It's chaired through the Board of Selectment by Sean Ascom, who does an excellent job bringing together literally fire, police, ambulance, Board of Education, every player you could imagine who has to contribute to public safety in Simsbury, and coordinated through emergency management, and it's just another example of Simsbury's thoughtful approach to something this difficult, and it's a really valuable hour that we all spend on Thursday morning. Through that meeting, I will also note that any PPE that the Simsbury Public Schools access has been donated to the right causes.
Did we lose Neil?
Yeah, the audio's...
I think we lost Neil. Alright, we can come back, Neil, when he gets back online, if that works for everybody. Sue, do you want to share with us?
Sure, I can actually pick up where Neil left off, he was talking about personal protective equipment, PPEs, and in collaboration with our Director of Security, Mark Critts, and our Director of Health Services, Sue Beardsley, they've collected all of those PPEs, and barring what we need for meal distribution, those PPEs have been donated to the local VNA, to ambulance, we've offered to Simsbury PD, to fire, and even to Hartford Hospital, so I'm sure that that's what he was going to share relative to that. And just wanted to take a moment to update you on our meal assistance, so it's still going very strong. As a reminder to board members, we distribute breakfast and lunch to families in need, however, people define that for themselves, on Mondays and Wednesdays from the Simsbury High School parking lot. Definitely want to thank Lori LaScarbo, our Director of Nutrition Services, she and her building food service managers are there tirelessly putting together meals, and they're there every Monday and Wednesday, we have quite a social distancing distribution technique. And also want to share and say thank you to Mark Critts, Director of Security, as he's there every Monday and Wednesday with us, as are the security guards, who just share with people kind of how the traffic patterns go and answer any questions. So we're, we've been averaging a total of 75 to 80 students served, so depending upon the day, that can be anywhere from over 312, over 400 meals at a distribution, so it's going very, very well, and the thanks I want to pull to the board for that support.
That's great Sue.
Hey, hey, make a comment on the PPE donation is phenomenal, everybody is, states are fighting over that, there's absolutely, clearly a shortage out there, so that just, that's phenomenal that we've stepped up in town of Simsbury to donate what we can.
Yeah, I agree, I'm so happy to hear that we're being able to help in any way whatsoever, so thanks for making sure that got coordinated and handled, that's terrific, and I'm glad to hear that our kids are getting the meals they need.
They are.
That's wonderful. And then this is Mary.
I'm all set, I have enough to share later on, so I'm okay right now, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Curtis, anything else to you?
No, I think we're good to get started.
Okay, so we have one vote on the table tonight.
Yes. So we have, we have one action item, and that is to approve the plans and specifications for the Simsbury High School roofing project, the partial roof replacement. You'll remember this was, it went to referendum at a little bit over $2 million, in the end it'll be a cost of about $1.4 million after reimbursement, reimbursement from the state to the town, so it's a substantial project, it's over $100,000, and the specifications have already been approved by the Public Building Committee, they've been approved by the architect, Chakunski Homes that we have been working with, the Fire Marshal, as well as the town staff, so really this is kind of a final step, so that we can prepare a pre-bid conference with the State of Connecticut to have and get this project out to bid, pick a vendor, and get the project moving, so it's really the last step in that process, so I certainly would take a motion to move this forward, and Dave Holden's been helping with this as well in the interim period in terms of review and coordination with the Building Committee, so that's been extremely helpful.
Okay, that's great, I'm glad Dave's been able to stick with us through all of it. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Still moved.
Thanks Tara, and a second?
Second.
Perfect, alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're into budget update, information...
Great, thank you, I'll take this one as well, this is, this is just a brief update to talk about where we are in the process, you'll remember, our last presentation was the march to the Board of Finance, when we moved forward, our Board of Education approved 2.27 budget, we were right there in the guideline, and felt good about where we were in terms of a budget that supports moving forward our strategic plan, and was still really fiscally responsible, so since that time, the Board of Selectment presented their budget, they were asked to go back and take a look at some things and make some reductions, and do some different things with capital, which they did. Susan and I attended a virtual meeting on April 7, and the goal of that meeting was for the Board of Finance to move forward budgets to the public hearing on the 21st. So the one thing that they did do after discussion, and we were all a part of that conversation, was they did not feel comfortable in lieu of the current context, the significant rise in unemployment, the difficult challenges that people are going through to support dollars associated with new positions for the Board of Selectment and the Board of Education. We talked about, or I spoke to them, I recognize the challenges there, so they reduced the budget to the value of the new positions, so for us, that puts our budget at a 2.01% increase, and what we're really talking about is the one full-time equivalent position of the capstone coordinator. So my comment to the Board of Finance, again, is that we understand the significant challenge, but this is a position that we thought very seriously about, so in terms of moving the budget, we'll support the fact that we can find the $92,000 somewhere, but it would not probably be at the cost of that position because we need to move that position forward. So what I ended up doing over this past week is I talked to Susan, I talked to Kira several times, and we found flexibility on one of our larger grants, our Open Choice Grant, which is a million dollar grant, we can absorb the capstone coordinator position on that grant, which is perfectly, perfectly within the parameters of the grant, and still be okay and support the reduced dollar, so it's essentially the same budget moving forward with a grant-funded position, so I just wanted to talk through that today a little bit, respond to any questions that you might have, but that's the budget that, we don't need to vote on that, that's the budget amount that the Board of Finance has moved forward to public hearing. Certainly they want support of that, and I said, we recognize the extraordinary times that we're under, and I understand the optics of new positions, and we'll find a way to work within our bottom-line budget to support where they need to go, and I think we've been able to do that.
So if it's a lower amount than we approved, we don't have to revote?
We don't have to revote, Todd, because at that meeting, that's the number that the Board of Finance selected to move forward, they kind of have the purview to do that, so that's already been done, but I do know that they, they want, wanted me to share that, and certainly they want everybody to be supportive of the direction that we're going in, understand that it's a difficult time, and there was certainly a lot of conversation about next year's budget planning, and how challenging that might be with the uncertainty in the economy, but the reality is that this budget that they've moved forward with the support of the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectment, and the Board of Finance, will be a slight decrease in the meal rate for residents this year.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have questions for Matt about this? Sorry, I have to scroll through to see you all. I think, I think it's, you know, as Matt said, we were in that conversation, I think, you know, it's the right thing to do to be supportive, but clearly we need that position so badly at the high school if we're moving the mandated capstone project forward, so I think, you know, I'm appreciative of the fact that you found a way to handle that position and still do what we've been asked to do.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Can I just ask a question, I mean, I think you handled it beautifully, I think it's, I think you did a great job, my question is, do you think that the state will change those mandates in the lieu of what's been going on?
I do not, I haven't seen, in all the communication, and there's just been significant communication coming from the state, I haven't, I haven't seen anything to that effect that would indicate that, you know, it's tied to the credit requirement, which you know, Tara has been on, kind of on the agenda for a decade, right? And I think they finally have moved in that direction.
That was just a soft, off-comment, but I think you did a great job, I mean, as long as we can get a budget passed, I'm really impressed that you got where we got.
Anybody else?
I have one more thing that I thought of, do we, I know that there's no way to anticipate this, and I'm trying to talk fast so you don't hear my dog barking, do we think that coming, coming back, whenever we come back, whether it's May, June, or August, that we're going to need more nurses, or anything, any, anything else, that we might need more nurses, or maybe say Barry, or somebody else, that that might be an extra expense we're not thinking about?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting point, and I think as we get closer to a time when they will reopen the schools, Sue and I, as we were preparing to transition out, we're in almost daily conversation with our local health director, I think those will be, you know, they're great questions, Todd, and questions we're going to have to figure out as we get closer to this. One of the things we're doing behind the scenes is really taking a look at potential cost savings measures while we're out of school, and what we'll do with those dollars should we be faced with increased costs when we do reopen. So we're really thinking about the financial piece of that right now, it's not huge dollars at this point because of the executive orders on continuity of pay, obviously, but there will be areas that I think we will capture some savings, and we'll report on that, I think at our next board meeting, but that'll be important to address things moving forward in this kind of new normal when we see where we're at.
Sure.
I was thinking we might need tutors, too.
To help the kids kind of get back up to speed?
Well, certain kids, I don't think it's going to be even, you know, who's getting what they need, I think there'll be certain kids that might need more.
The social workers, again. Right, right, so I think that's going to be, you know, all good things for us to maybe discuss, and I, hopefully with the distance learning presentation, that'll bring us back to those questions, we might get some answers as we look through what's ahead.
Yep.
If that works for everybody, we'll start with that, and then we can ask questions as we go.
Yes, thanks.
Sure.
Alright, Aaron, you're up.
Alright, thank you, good evening everyone, and wishing all of you health and your families' well, health as well. As you know, since March 13, we've been working hard, focusing on developing a distance learning program for our K-12 students during what we see as this most unusual time for education right now. We started very quickly with an initial implementation phase, and once extended time was given in the sense of the, from the March 31st to April 20th, and now the May 20th date, we're moved into what we're calling is our ongoing learning opportunities for students. So this presentation is intended to provide you an overview of our K-12 program, our distance learning program, and we'll continue to do this during any further extended time. I do want to point out here on this particular slide, through an equity lens, and we're talking academically, emotionally, and socially, we want to point out very strongly that our school counselors, our social workers, our choice specialists, our social, our school psychologists have really been checking in with all families to ensure that students have the access that they need for distance learning. We also have many paraprofessionals, interventionists, which I'll speak about a little further in the presentation, that are very actively involved in providing an equitable learning opportunity for students. When we began this process, our principals brought their faculties together for faculty meetings to help provide direction for our teachers, to talk about the technology, the systems that we will use in this new learning opportunity, so that we can engage students in learning that can be quite challenging at times, not only challenging for students, but challenging for our teachers, for our families, for our administrators, these are unprecedented times, and we're working hard to put together a way to continue learning opportunities for our students in Simsbury. Our plan and purpose, number one, is to promote that teacher-to-student connection, these are new times to utilize technology in this manner, and as much as we can is to provide them some predictable, authentic structures for learning in a way that keeps students and teachers, and students to students, and teachers to families connected, and this learning is all driven by our grade level content standards, so that we can pull together what has been taught recently to students, but again, introduce new learning. What we look to do is to provide consistency to our K-12 classrooms and courses that we have for our students. Clearly, this has, technology is at the center of the work that we're doing, we've, we've learned a great deal in a short period of time, you can see these various platforms, Seesaw, Google Classroom, Screencastify, there are so many various platforms, but we are trying to identify and utilize those that are the most appropriate and engaging for students. So we have some ongoing teacher training, not only for our teachers, but for our administrators. We actually are providing some teacher training during this vacation week, there was a session today, there were over 15 people that participated, and we had a second-grade teacher and a library media specialist put it on, so we're pleased that we have teachers, we have tech support, we have instructional technology teachers that are just stepping forward, trying to provide the best kind of professional learning for our certified and non-certified teachers, and we see this all wrapped around professional learning communities. Collaboration is a critical foundational aspect of the work that we do, we do it to plan, to problem-solve, to share, to really be in this work together, and it's really a critical aspect of the work that we're doing. This is a structure that we feel was important to put forward, an elementary schedule, as you can see here, it's inclusive of direct instruction on the particular learning targets that we're identifying in reading, writing, math. We want to ensure that there's opportunities for new learning, reinforcement learning, opportunities for intervention, as well as some unbelievable opportunities for kids in art, music, PE, and in world language for kids in grades four, five, and six, but we also want to ensure that there's flexible time, so that there can be other kinds of connections between teachers and students, or teachers and small groups of students, so that kids and classmates can, can come together periodically, and again, this is evolving, this is, as we kicked a lot of this off, and we'll come back to it on Monday, April 20. As I said, at the elementary level, you know, providing this direct, standards-based instruction is very critical, we've had tremendous support from our language arts consultants, our math coaches, that have been very, very busy in identifying and assisting our gen ed teachers and special ed teachers around the learning targets for students. ed teachers around the, the, the learning targets for students, um, providing suggested opportunities for lessons and materials. And, um, all of this is so relatively new. We've got, uh, with, with some of our faculty, we've got those that are very skilled in technology and others that are not. So we're trying to work collectively to build skill, but also provide materials and opportunities. I think, um, the teacher, um, instruction and, and videos that, that are being used is this again, as a collaborative, a professional learning opportunity, where teachers in similar grade levels and/or courses come together to create opportunities that can be shared. So teachers are sharing materials back and forth across the district. As we said, you know, personal connections matter. This is so, we want to keep that sense of community as best we can, um, although we know how, how difficult it is, given the uniqueness of, of family structures and situations during this, this difficult time, but teacher to student, student to student, and teacher to families is so, so important. So what this does is it really does lead us into our secondary conversations that both our high school principal and middle school principals have done to, to move that work forward. When we think of, of Henry James Middle School, we always are thinking about connections, challenge, and character, and this is what Scott Baker brought forward with his faculty as he talked with them and began to prepare for distance learning. Clearly, when it comes to connections, it's about creating and keeping that culture and new ways to interact collectively. That challenge, that we want to introduce ongoing new learning opportunities, but we also want to make sure that we're providing the necessary support for students when, when it is needed. We want to look at character and I, as I said a few minutes ago, every situation, yours, mine, every family has a unique situation. We have to be open and aware of and recognize these situations so that we can do as best we can to provide the most appropriate and timely, um, education to students. These are situations that we just have to be flexible and adaptable for, um, as we go forward. As we talk, and this is not simply just the high school and the middle school, this is, is really a K-12 planning opportunity, as we think about synchronous learning, this is that kind of real-time learning that we want students to have. We want a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning so that there are real-time opportunities in the moment where questions and can be answered, clarity can be made, um, and feedback provided for students. But there are also different times where students have different times that they will be able to learn and so there are videos, there's communication that's not live, but these are opportunities that we think are very, very important and that balance to us needs to be in our K-12 distance learning program. This is an example of a structure that we've put in place for both the middle school and the high school, a schedule that will be in full force. It was, began to be implemented prior, um, to this past week and as you can see, we've identified, um, classes that will be held at various times on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday with opportunities for small group in, um, and also intervention time on Wednesday. We did this, uh, a similar schedule for the middle school and high school because there are shared staffing between the two buildings, so wanted to provide for that common structure in that schedule. Special education and general ed teachers have been working so closely together. We are here to support all students in their learning and the opportunities that have come forward between our special ed, um, paraprofessionals and our general ed teachers, um, has just been such a key in supporting those 500-plus students that we're trying to reach in our K-12 program. IEPs are being implemented, obviously, to the greatest extent possible. There's been a number of individual meetings, small group meetings, mixed group meetings. These are all so important and our special education teachers have done a very good job of using the technology in which to, um, support all of their students on their caseloads. Our mental health workers and providers have been working really hard. I mentioned them at the beginning, um, school psychologists, social workers, our choice specialists, these are people that are making, um, school counselors, making connections with students to continue to support them on a regular base. It's not a one, let me check in and just see how you're doing. It's an ongoing kind of check-in that, that's happening. Um, and of course, we have so many other partners in this work that we're doing. Our paraeducators, as I mentioned earlier, this ongoing technology training that's happening this week, but will continue as we move, move forward. We had almost 10 paraprofessionals that are looking to, um, build their skill and capacity so that they can make time, um, engaging with students when they're meeting with them. Our nurses, uh, community providers that we've had, and of course, our parents have been such support people, um, in this work, but the collaborative work that's going on between special education teachers, general ed teachers in this distance learning program has really been a critical aspect to the work that we're doing. The other opportunities, as we've talked about for intervention, again, meeting the needs of all students, we have our K-6 reading intervention, uh, teachers. They're doing small groups with students. We have our math tutors that continue to reach out and support students. English language learners, our English learners are continuing to get the kind of support and outreach that they need. And tutors and professionals, again, um, they will continue to do this ongoing connections with students. Our counselors at 712 are working hard. They're working to, um, make sure that the 504 accommodations and modifications are being implemented as needed, um, but also just the whole opportunity to connect with kids. Certainly our high school students as we're looking not only as our seniors as they make the move, um, out of, of Simsbury High School, it's our 11th graders and our 10th graders. So there's just ongoing work that our school counselors are involved in as well. As you look at, um, the grading that, uh, and this is an ongoing conversation, um, we're, we're continuing to talk about the way in which we will provide feedback to families regarding learning during this distance learning time. Our middle school, uh, PLCs, our teachers, uh, per course are coming together to identify various learning tasks that they will use to be able to, uh, gather information and to provide feedback. At Simsbury High School, we've been talking about eight to 10 essential assignments that students will be turning in for grading purposes, but at the start of June, we will begin to have conversation because we want to engage students in any conversation or, um, decisions that they have if they were to take these courses as pass or, um, incomplete. And we, we'll continue, we're in the midst of this conversation. We've got some clarity yet to define for, uh, for families, but this is where we are right now, that students will earn a grade and have the option for a pass or incomplete, um, and will have some very clear homework expectations. But we also did make the, um, decision that there will not be June final exams, even if we were to return for a period, whether it was two weeks or three weeks, it would not make sense to sit in five days of exams at Simsbury High School. We would continue with the ongoing learning that we have provided them at this point now. So as you can see, um, hopefully you can see that teamwork and collaboration has been and will continue to be such a critical aspect of our work around distance learning. All these various, whether it's PLCs, grade level meetings, the special services, the full faculty, and I can't leave and, and end this conversation without talking about the work that the administrators have led, how they've engaged their faculty in conversations, our department supervisors, 712. It's, it's hard to begin to say, um, you know, all of these people have done tremendous work and will continue to engage in, uh, collaborative opportunities, um, to continue this learning over time. So as we, um, get back and, um, continue in this work, we will put out a survey to families where we will look to gather information regarding this distance learning process. We're eager to know, um, after a couple of weeks, it probably will go out that week of April 27th, so that we can gather feedback, so that we can continue to learn, grow, and adjust as we need to, as time goes on. So I'm hoping that that provides you with a general overview, but we're working hard to meet the needs of all students. We've had challenges, we'll continue to have challenges, uh, but we're working to, um, adjust and, and, and provide that engaging learning opportunity for our students in Simsbury.
That's great, Erin, thank you so much. I'd like to open it up for questions for everybody. So, um, if you want to jump on in?
First of all, I just want to say thank you so much because I, the curriculum meeting met, the curriculum committee met and we had a great conversation about all of this work that's been done in the, in the PowerPoint. And it, it is so amazing to me, the amount of work that's been done in the short period of time that it's been done in, and I am just so thankful that we had the basis that we had, the technology that we had one-to-one with our students, um, and that we've been able to make sure that everybody can get Wi-Fi. Right there, we were, we were already ahead of ourselves there, which was great to know, and the work that you've done has just been amazing. I am, um, just impressed that we're where we're at.
Erin, Erin, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
For high school students who elect to go the pass incomplete route, is that an all-or-nothing option for all courses?
So we're, we're in that conversation right now. We will have an answer for that, um, because that's, as, as we begin to make these, um, decisions, that question then surfaces and we need an answer for that. So we have an opportunity coming up, um, later this week, um, to begin to sort that out. So we'll have that information for you shortly.
Thank you.
So Erin, hi. Um, so if, going back to the, the, um, you're saying pass incomplete or pass fail, is that up to us or is that the state that's making the decision around that?
Can I take that one?
Yeah.
Erin, a recommendation came out from the state last week. It was one of the major areas of focus that superintendents wanted some input from the commissioner on, and he has a team working on that. So, uh, his recommendation is that we move, uh, and districts move in a direction where at least there's that option, uh, to have. We've had many conversations with local districts, uh, Glastonbury, Avon, uh, South Windsor, uh, many similar districts who kind of at this point felt that an option, um, may really be the way to go, meaning if I'm in a course and I'm doing well, um, with the grade that been given, I have an option to do that. If I want the option to take it pass or incomplete, I have that option, but it certainly is, um, tied to what the state is recommending, Sharon.
Okay, thank you.
And it's just for the quarter too.
But it's still, still hasn't been decided yet though, right? How many, like how it'll affect the GPA or anything else?
Right. Right, we have, we've, we've done some of the math, we're continuing to do that, um, and we will have all of that information out, um, as soon as we put it together. So we are thinking about what, how each quarter and midterm and last quarter is, uh, rated together, averaged together.
I, I know that this is, uh, this is all new for everybody, but if, if I heard, I heard correctly, you said the, the survey is going out the 27th of April, does that give us enough time to learn from the survey and plow those lessons back into whatever time we have left? May 20th is the date right now?
I want to get rid of this.
So I think, you know, we're talking about the week of the 27th to try to gather, the, the survey will probably have six to eight questions on it, so I think we'll get that back relatively soon. We have, um, when students return, we have four weeks and three days to get us to that May 20th, so I think it will give us good information, um, as we move forward. You know, clearly what we're, we're doing, as I mentioned, is, um, matching the expectations to learning targets which are based on standards, so that will give us, um, really the pathway in which to, um, score students or grade them or give them feedback. Most important thing is to gather, as I said earlier, gather the evidence and provide student feedback as, as best we can.
Thanks.
So Erin, this survey is going to, um, all levels, the high school, middle school, and elementary?
Yes, that's correct.
And looked at individually too, right?
Yeah.
So responses, okay, based on grade level?
Yes, yes, we're asking, yes, we'll be asking grade level, we'll be asking, uh, school, we'll be asking information to get, so that we have that, uh, way we can look at the data.
Sharon, I think, I think that's a great point and, um, this opportunity certainly has allowed me to have many, many conversations, uh, with parents about some of the circumstances and challenges they're faced with. And one area we have gotten considerable feedback on is that primary age student, um, where kids are not yet independent, and then you compound that with the situation where both parents, uh, may be working, and, uh, we need to figure out ways to continue to be flexible with how we support kids and do right by kids and keep them connected when the degree of engagement may really, uh, vary due to circumstances that people are trying to juggle. So, you know, our hope is that, um, another week of Phase Two, to, to Todd's question, where we're into Phase Two and people get a better understanding of what that looks like, and then how we make adjustments, um, from there, um, as we plan for the long haul. Because I think it's prudent for us to plan like we're going to be out the entire time, even though the date is just the 20th, uh, so that when we get to the 20th, we're not in any kind of scramble and we continue to be proactive in what we do. Hopefully we'll be fortunate to be back, but I think we have to, uh, plan as if, um, we're moving to the end of the year.
So on that same note then, Matt, you know, I know we'll have the survey, but, um, have we gotten any insight, you know, even at this point, as, you know, around our ability to connect with our students, you know, and how much feedback we've gotten in that area? From the, you know, from teachers, from the principal?
Yeah, I, I think certainly as, as we add the four days of Phase Two, there were many more touchpoints, um, with teachers. I think there was the feeling that, um, the structure we provided was going to be much more engaging than the input we're getting from the, the principals via the teachers and, and conversations with, uh, with the families.
Hey Matt.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a question. So in terms of feedback, um, what feedback are you getting from the staff, from the teachers, since this is a, you know, all new platforms that we're all developing and, and all working in this together? So what do you hear from, from them and, and how does it affect their, their teaching? You know, it's the first time doing all of virtual online.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's much like it's a parallel to the home situation, right? It's very varied based on the degree and the circumstances that that teacher is juggling, uh, at home as well, but, um, uh, the important thing for us to recognize is that we have teachers, uh, with varying degrees of expertise in the technology. So as Erin mentioned, we're working hard to get people comfortable, uh, with that. Teachers have been great and jumping, uh, jumping in with two feet. So I've been incredibly impressed with the engagement level, the willingness to collaborate with each other, um, but you know, there's varying degrees of how that experience is going based on, on people's own personal circumstance, but to be honest with you.
Erin, I had a question. Are we seeing any of the demand rise for the tutors or the math coaches now that the kids have been working for a couple of weeks from home? kids have been working for a couple of weeks from home? That's part A, and then part B would be the same thing with the, with any of the kids seeking out social workers or counselors, or any of the families looking for additional help through, through those venues?
So I can answer the tutors and the intervention. We began to see more need for that just before vacation, and I think we'll continue to see that need. The connection that our paras and support staff are making with general ed teachers is, is that they're getting to know it as best they can to support students. So we'll see more of that, and they are standing ready to take on, you know, the work that they need to do. I think I would defer to Sue Lemke for the social worker aspect of it, if she's open to that.
Absolutely. So Susan, just to answer that question, I wouldn't say a greater demand right now for more, but are school psychologists and social workers busy? Absolutely. So if a teacher's noticing that a student hasn't checked in with those personal reachouts even, not engaging, certainly the teachers themselves have been really good about reaching out, but then also calling in their social worker and school psychologist colleague, and also on nurses. So they'll call and do specific checks with them, and just make sure that every kid is accounted for and is on someone's radar, even if it's to say, yep, we just had to step back a little bit, it was a tough week of transition, then great, how can we get you back and supported to the best of our ability in this situation? So.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it on both fronts, that people feel like they can still reach out to us for resources in all those ways. And then my other, lastly, which I thought about while we were talking about the tutors, is do our parents know that if they're really maybe struggling with the at-home piece of this, to reach to their classroom teachers to look for strategies to maybe help them over a hump, or whatever that might be?
That's absolutely what we're attempting to communicate with families, is to ensure that they know, they should be reaching out to teachers and teachers reaching out to families as well, to ensure that all of this uniqueness is understood, so different support systems and/or periods of learning time can be adjusted for students. So we're absolutely, we've talked with one another. If there's a student that doesn't participate for a day or two, there's an, you know, automatic reach out to families, like let's, let's not let time go by before we make that connection with families.
Erin, have we had any, I'm sorry, Susan. Erin, have we had many of those, though?
Not that I'm aware of. There have been, you know, a few that the counselors I know at the secondary level have stepped right in to address. And other than that, I don't have a long list of that, but we're trying to stay on top of it as best we can. And certainly, as teachers are beginning, we'll, we'll be able to learn more about it when we step into Monday, where the, the ongoing learning's taking place, and teachers will be looking to see who's participating, and we'll have a better idea, too, of who's present or who may not be present at the time.
My guess would be those that may have been struggling in any way when we were in a normal environment, that we're just, you know, watching out for them.
And we have done that. Our support systems, both at the high school, the middle school, they know who these kids are that they've been working with, and they're making extra efforts in which to connect with them. Yeah.
Cassie, this question may be premature before the survey, but I think you probably hit it right on the head earlier. You know, if your student is, you know, fourth, fifth grade and above, there's been exposure to online learning and Google classrooms to sort of one level or another. It's really that younger primary grades that, boy, I talk about, this is a sea change. Let's be honest, this is a sea change of how we learn. So just any initial thoughts on how to provide them maybe a little bit more support?
Yeah, I think a main piece there, Jeff, is understanding the individual circumstances of different families, right? Because there's a different degree based on the working schedule of parents, of their ability to support in the moment. I had a really good conversation with a parent today about that, that it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all for some of these primary grades, and we need to get comfortable with that, and the families need to get comfortable with that. And the communication between, you know, principal and family, and teacher and family will help us get there. But certainly in my conversation earlier today with Betsy Gonzalez about this is, yeah, we can ensure that some of our non-certified staff can be more on hand for some of these families to support, maybe in a, in a smaller kind of virtual environment as well.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all, so that's great to hear. Thank you.
Are they doing, are we going to move to, or are we doing where parents call in and call out somebody who's sick so we can, you know, the kid maybe isn't, you know, virus-related, but they have something else? Are we going to ask parents to call out, or no?
We haven't, we haven't made that decision at this point. Right now, we wanted to kind of monitor that engagement by the touchpoints that are going on with the teachers and follow up with, to see if there's any concerns on that front, rather than really kind of have a strict attendance policy at this point.
So if I could weigh in on that, we actually got a little guidance from the state for an end-of-the-year report that has to do with attendance, and they're asking school systems only to report attendance for those days where you are in physical school. And so at the end of the year, if we don't make it back to school, we will not be reporting attendance for these days.